Hello, everyone. How's everyone doing today?
Good.
Good. Okay, there we go. That's what I'm talking about. So I'm Elizabeth Hewlett, Chair of the Prince George's County Planning Board, and I'm going to do a roll, a check to make sure that we have our planning board members with us today. Okay. Okay, so there we have. So I see Vice Chair Bailey, Dorothy Bailey. I see Commissioner Shaunice Washington.
President.
Commissioner Will Dornar. He's present. And I see Commissioner Manny Geraldo.
Present.
Yes, indeed, he is. So we are also joined by our principal legal counsel, David Warner, I see. And in the hearing room, we have our technical hearing writer, Lee Kratka, safely distanced away. And we have our planning director, Andre Green Chekley. And we have Kenny Flanagan, who's doing all of our PowerPoints and whatnot and keeping us focused. So we have our good team. I know James Hunt, the Chief of Development Review, is in the vicinity, so guiding us through everything as well. So, and then we have Langley, who is on loan to us, who's helping us out with technology as well. So the planning board is now in session for our July 9, 2020, hearing. And due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this is the 15th virtual meeting utilizing online phone and video capabilities. So we've been having these hearings since mid-March. And during these challenging and unprecedented times, the Commission remains steadfastly committed to promoting a safe and healthy environment for our public, for our applicants, for our stakeholders, and for our staff, and of course, for the boards, while we all continue business operations to propel Prince George's County forward. I'd like to take a moment to reiterate our guidelines for these virtual hearings. For, it's coming up on the screen. Speaker preregistration and pre-submission of comments and exhibits is required. All participants must preregister, and all materials must be submitted by 10:00 a.m. on the Wednesday before the planning board meeting, as shown on the screen. The registered speakers and presenters connecting through a computer, tablet, or smartphone can join the meeting with the link provided via the email from the planning board office. Online participants may be prompted to install GoToMeeting software in order to participate in the process. To listen or participate in the meeting using a phone line, the registered participants may dial the call-in number provided via the email. All participants must mute their phones when not speaking, so please do not put your phone on hold. To eliminate audio feedback, only one connected device with sound should be in the room at the same time. Meanwhile, the public may continue to watch planning board meetings streamed live, or if you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on our online web form. And please note the screen right there for instructions. We thank each and every one of you and appreciate your flexibility, cooperation, and support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during our new normal. As always, we commence our planning board hearings with a mo— Okay, somebody, everybody needs to be, everybody else needs to be muted, if possible. Okay. So as always, we commence our meetings, our planning board meetings, with a moment of silence in honor of the individuals and loved ones that we've lost throughout our community and nation who passed away recently. I'm going to start out, in Prince George's County, we lost an icon in the legal community. Most of our attorneys knew him well. The public has experienced this retired judge. But anyway, it was Judge Vincent Famea, who was an Associate Judge of the Circuit Court for Prince George's County, and also an Associate Judge before that of the District Court of Maryland. He was a former Deputy and Assistant State's Attorney for Prince George's County. He was a very intelligent, engaging man with a sense of humor pretty much unparalleled by most people. So it's a huge loss for the, for the community. We want to remember Judge Vince Famea. Wanda Leonard, who was a Commissioner and the former mayor of the town of Upper Marlboro. She was only the second African-American mayor in the town's 313-year history. We want to remember the people who passed due to the COVID-19 virus. Over 3 million in the United States, closing in on 71,000 in Maryland, and 300, those are the confirmed cases, and over 3,725 deaths in the state of Maryland. In Prince George's County, we have 19,776 confirmed cases since the onset, and 692 deaths. Again, these are, I give them as statistics, but remember, these are loved ones. These are people who are in our community. These are people who were loved by their families. We want to remember them. We also want to remember Herbert Wolf Melgar, the broadcaster, who was a native of El Salvador and a resident of Prince George's County, who organized major Hispanic festivals in our areas year in and year out. Nick Cordero, age 41, the Tony Award-nominated Broadway actor for his roles in Bullets Over Broadway and A Bronx Tale. Vanessa Guian, who was the missing Army Specialist, last seen on April 22 at Fort Hood Military Base. Her remains were ultimately discovered on June 30. Hugh Downs, age 99, the Emmy-winning broadcaster who hosted ABC's 20/20, NBC's Today, CBS's 60 Minutes, and the game show Concentration, who was also an announcer and substitute host on The Tonight Show. Speaking of comedy, Carl Reiner, age 98, TV comedy pioneer, who was the writer, director, and producer, who sometimes appeared on The Dick Van Dyke Show. He was the father of actor Rob Reiner, sometimes known as Meathead, and he was Saul in Ocean's Eleven, Twelve, and Thirteen. Just an amazing comedic force. And he was recently depicted celebrating Mel Brooks' birthday. Both of them were 98. And it was interesting, both of them wore down in their Black Lives Matter shirts just, just a couple of weeks ago. Joe Bugle, age 80, the former NFL coach known as the Architect of the Hogs. He was the Washington Football Team's legendary offensive line during the '80s, and led the Washington Football Team to three Super Bowls and two championships. Olamay Spinks. Olamay Spinks, age 106, retired librarian, who played a critical pivotal role in organizing the slave narratives in the United States Library of Congress. They were the recollections of over 2,000 former enslaved people, and they were gathered in 1936 through 1938 during the Great Depression. So I know our own Vice Chair knows a lot about that, and she was, she actually played a part in a performing, in a real, live performance depicting one of these persons who was telling her story about being enslaved. And she may want to comment on that later. Johnny Mandel, age 94, Oscar and Grammy-winning songwriter, who composed the MASH theme song. Freddie Cole, age 88, jazz singer and pianist, who was Grammy-nominated in 2019 for the Best Jazz Vocal Album. He happened to be the younger brother of the inimitable Nat King Cole. Kelly Asbury, director of the animated film Shrek 2. And he's also the story artist for Frozen and Toy Story. Danny Hicks, the actor who played an evil dead dark man in Spider-Man 2. Near and dear to my heart, Milton Glazer, age 91, the graphic designer known for the iconic "I Love New York" logo to promote tourism in the state of New York since 1977. He was also the co-founder of New York Magazine in 1968. He died on his birthday, on June 26. Joe Sinnett, comic artist, age 93. There's a theme here. Those comedians tend to live long lives, so keep a sense of humor. Age 93, helped define the look of Marvel Comics, worked on The Fantastic Four, Captain America novel, and The Amazing Spider-Man newspaper strip. Linda Cristal, age 89, the Golden Globe-winning actress of The High Chaperone and The Perfect Furlough. Charlie Daniels, the Country Music Hall of Fame fiddler. Marvin Brown, the singer of the Soul, in the Soul Group, The Soft Tones. Ennio Morricone, age 91, the Oscar-winning composer for films The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly, The Mission, and The hateful eight. Charlie Webb, the novelist who wrote The Graduate and Homeschool. Madeline Winnie Dale, age 98, the first female officer of the Federal Reserve Bank. William Demmett, age 91, scientist who coined R.E.M., which is Rapid Eye Movement, and developed a field of sleep research. Manuel Cowboy Donley, age 92, Teano music pioneer, who was a singer, instrumentalist, arranger, and composer. I know that there are many more people who have passed. Also, we have John Mooney, who was the father of the Cadillac Converter, who also died at age 90. And Alex Pullen, who was the former world snowboard champion, who died in a drowning accident at the tender age of 32. There are many more for any of you in our listening or viewing audience who suffered a loss. Our hearts, we extend our hearts to you, and we hold you in our thoughts and prayers. If we may have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. So our last meeting was in June. It is now the month of July, which is National Parks and Recreation Month. It is National Sandwich Generation Month. For those of us who have parents and those of us who have kids, you know, you are right smack in the middle in that sandwich generation, and very often don't take care of yourselves. So it's important that you take care of yourselves, too. It is National HIV Awareness Month, National Roadside Traffic Safety Awareness Month, and Bereaved Parents Awareness Month. So many parents have lost their own children, and there's nothing more egregious, and there is no more profound loss than losing your child. So we want to remember all bereaved parents during this month. The week of July 5 through the 11th is National Therapeutic Recreation Week, which is something that we, that we at the Park and Planning Commission, and particularly our Department of Parks and Recreation, has been a pioneer in this area. And we have received national awards in the area of National Therapeutic Recreation. It is also Be Nice to New Jersey Week. Now, Commissioner Geraldo, do you hear that? Okay, so I guess that means we all have to be extra nice to Commissioner Geraldo. Now, apparently, July is a big foodie month because it is National Baked Beans Month, National Grilling Month, National Blueberry Month, National Hot Dog Month, National Deli Sandwich Month, National Watermelon Month, and National Ice Cream Month. We have a couple more announcements that I'd like to make. First of all, we have the census sign up there. Come, we had, today is July 9. Come August 11, we have until August 11 to really start getting people to fill out their census forms. It is so apparent, so important, because we lost $363 million in Prince George's County simply by people not completing their census. We know that people are afraid. Those of us who are gung-ho have already done so, so we really need to serve as ambassadors to get people to complete their census forms. In Prince George's County, our self-response rate as of now is 63.6%. In Maryland, it's 65.9%. So we really need to work hard to get this done. The goal of the county executive also, Brooks, is to get to at least 85%. We don't want to leave money on the table. I know the people who are watching us have completed the census forms, but it's imperative that we ask our neighbors, our families, we make sure that the other people that we know complete their census forms. So I'm going to go back to our, and you can do this virtually, and you can do this by phone, you can do this online. And so the phone number and the site is depicted on the screen, my2020census.gov, or 844-330-2020. So I'd like to go back to our planning board for a second, if I can have a visual. Of us. Now, that is why each one of us is wearing our proud-to-be-counted census caps today. We are all, all in in ensuring that Prince George's County residents are counted. Please help us do the right thing. Please help us get everyone counted. Please help us tell the story of why this is so important to Prince George's County, how it helps with programs like SNAP, and WIC, and hospitals, hospitalizations, and having enough vaccines for any kind of quite unexpected crisis that could occur. And it's so very, very important. We do not want to leave this money on the table. Helps with transportation and so many other things. So are we all in? Are we all in for census? Okay, there we go. And I will say that the Department of Parks and Recreation is continuing their grab-and-go programs. It went from three locations to five locations, now to nine locations, five days a week distributing food to persons in need. And then we have extreme teens partnering with county agencies to present safe dates and how healthy is your relationship. I will also tell you that we have kicked off a program with the State's Attorney's Office for Prince George's County. It's a joint program with the State's Attorney's Office, the brainchild of State's Attorney Aisha Brave Boy, in partnership with our Department of Parks and Recreation. It's going to teach teens about the justice system, the law enforcement, the role of the judge, the role of the jury. And it's just so, so impressive. So I had the opportunity to participate in the kickoff. But even if no one chooses a direction to go in a field of a law enforcement or legal field, it educates youth about their rights, which is so very important as well. So with that, I think that may be it for the announcements. Again, we thank you for your flexibility, cooperation, and support. And we ask that you make every effort to stay safe. Look out for one another, stay strong, stay resilient, and remain ever hopeful and woke as we strive to get through all of these challenges together. Thank you. I am going to commence with our agenda. The first order of business is Item 1, the Resolution of Appreciation for Judy Dambrosi, whose virtual retirement is today. So we all have that before us. But Judy has ably and conscientiously served the residents of Prince George's County for 31 years as a dedicated team member of the Planning Department of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. She's worked on so many plans. She came in working on the Bowie Master Plan and is departing just as we're kicking off the Bowie Area, Bowie Mitchellville and Vicinity Master Plan, and so many others in between. So we want to give Judy a round of applause. And, and then if I could have a motion to approve the resolution, that would be helpful.
Second?
We have a motion by, we have a motion by Vice Chair Bailey, and seconded by Commissioner Washington. Vice Chair Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you. And the next is, we have the draft minutes of the meeting of June 25, 2020.
Move approval, Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington.
Okay. We have a motion and a second by Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries 5-0. Okay. So next, we have the consent agenda. However, before we get too far down the consent agenda, I need a motion to remove Item 4D, which is the final plat 5-19004, Grayling, Parcel A Variation. And we will, I need a motion to remove that from the consent agenda and set it in as Item 12.
Move, Madam Chair, second?
So a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Okay. So now, we can go through the remainder of the consent agenda. Is there anyone here to oppose the staff's recommendations on Item 4A, B, E, F, G, and H? And except for, let me, let me just do this for G. Mr. Rivera, you're signed up for Item G. Is that just for questions?
Yes, that was just to watch the paper.
Okay. So, so we need a motion for Items 4A, B, E, F, G, and H.
Move, Madam—
Aye.
Okay. Okay, I'm real confused here.
I voted for the motion.
Okay, so who made the motion? Commissioner Washington? Or did you make the motion?
It didn't matter. I'll second whatever.
Okay. Okay, Vice Chair Bailey made the motion and voted at the same time. Okay. And Commissioner Washington seconded. Vice Chair Bailey, we're counting your vote. Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
The ayes have it, passed 5-0. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Item 11, which is the 2018 Water and Sewer Service Area Changes. It's the March 2020 Cycle of Amendments, CR 45 2020.
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Ivy Thompson. I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Ivy Thompson and Bobby Ray, are you here, too?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning.
Thank you. And Katina Schollers, are you here, too?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am here.
Okay, so I understand, okay, so let me, let you, you all kick it off. Ms. Thompson or Ms. Schollers? I understand there are a couple of changes you need to make. Ms. Thompson, you want to get us started?
Good morning, Madam Chair. This is Katina. I do, I just, I do apologize for a last-minute change.
No worries.
One of the cases, we did confirm that the recommended land use is mixed-use. And we just want permission to make that change and forward that to DEPI, to the Department of Inspections, Permitting, and Enforcement, and let them know to make that change in their, in their staff report. And this is for the first case, which is the Livingston—
Livingston Warehouse, okay, got it. Okay. So with that, and then Ms. Thompson, you will incorporate that in your presentation, then, the rest of—
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Thompson, then?
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Ivy Thompson with the Countywide Planning Division. And this is a review of the requested amendments to the 2018 Water and Sewer Plan for March 2020. The 2018 Water and Sewer Plan was adopted by Council Resolution CR 64 2019 and amended by Council Resolutions CR 75 2019 and CR 11 2020, which provides four annual cycles of category change amendments to the plan. The March cycle is the first of the four cycles. Staff is seeking permission to transmit comments to the Prince George's County Council. Next slide, please. Council Resolution CR 45 2020 introducing the March 2020 cycle amendments was presented to the Prince George's County Council at their June 2 meeting. The planning board is required to provide comments to the County Council on CR 45 2020, part of the Environment article of the Annuated Code of Maryland and the adopted 2018 Water and Sewer Plan. The public hearing for the March 2020 cycle amendments was held on July 7. The County Council Committee of the Whole will discuss the county executive recommendations during their July 14 meeting. Next slide, please. Planning Department staff reviewed five category change requests. All are in the Fiscataway Sewer Basin. The county executive recommends advancing all five. Additionally, the Department of Planning, I mean, Department of Permitting, Inspections, and Enforcement has amended the sewer category maps to include four residential lots confirmed to be on public sewer, which were not reviewed by the Planning Department staff. Next slide, please. The first case is Livingston Road Warehouse. It's addressed as 11020 Livingston Road in Fort Washington. And this application is for the development of 130,000-square-foot warehouse in the I-3 Zone. The Planning Department, as Ms. Schollers mentioned, has recommended mixed-use for this property, and the request is to advance to Water and Sewer Category 4. Next slide, please. The next project is the Sheltonham Veteran Cemetery. Addressed as 11501 Southwest Robert Kearney Highway in Sheltonham. It's a public agency project for the future expansion of administrative and maintenance buildings in connection to the public water and sewer system. This project is being reviewed as an administrative mandatory referral. And the request for this project is to advance to Water and Sewer Category 3. Next slide, please. Here, house at Swan Creek is addressed as 12311 Hadlen Point Road in Fort Washington. It's for the development of a 4,769-square-foot custom home, custom-designed, single-family resort home. The property is in the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area. And the planning board reviewed and approved this project as CP-06001-01 and DSP-18052 Swan Creek Club Development Lot 9C. The DSP was reviewed and approved by the District Council, and the request is to advance to Water and Sewer Category 3. Next slide, please. Saddle Creek Parcel 236 is located on South Hill Road in Brandywine. And this is for the development of two single-family dwelling units with a minimum of 1,384 square feet of livable space and a minimum sale price of $350,990. And the request is to advance to Water and Sewer Category 3. Next slide, please. Saddle Creek Parcel 37 and 143 are addressed as 6405 and 6315 Willow Park Road in Brandywine. They are for the development of six single-family dwelling units with a minimum of 1,184 square feet of livable space with a minimum sale price of $350,990. And the request, again, is to advance to Sewer Category 3. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So please note that the countywide redesignations along Acquicket Road, Holly Hill Drive, are included in the March 2020 cycle of amendments. And they were included for administrative purposes to adjust the counties' mapping. DEPI included them for additional, for informational purposes only. And no action by the planning board is required on this item. Next slide, please. And staff is requesting planning board approval to transmit the March 2020 cycle amendment comments to the Prince George's County Council, and that concludes staff presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I'm going to see if the board has any questions for you at this time. Madam Vice Chair, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dornar?
No questions, thanks.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Yeah, the only question I have is for clarification. I saw that the county executive, on some of the changes, the county executive had recommended Sewer Level 4, Water and Sewer 4, but we were going to 3?
Sometime—
If you go back to, I think, number seven, Slide 7. And I, and I think, I think we, the county executive recommendation was to go to Category 4. But I think in the presentation, you said 3, so I'm a little confused.
That, that, that would be my error. That would, that would be my error. I apologize.
That's okay. There's another one that you did that as well. I think the subsequent one, either the one previous or the one subsequent. Can we look at Slide 8?
No. Slide 8, where the county executive recommended 3.
Slide 8. Let's go through 8.
The county executive recommend, okay.
4. So you said 4, and, and I think Ms. Thompson said 3. So I just want the record to be clear.
That, that's my fault. I did.
Okay.
Well, those slides are different.
So just so I'm, just so the record is clear, we went, whatever was recommended by the county executive, we went that way. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your questions. So Ms. Thompson, is there anything else to add? Or Ms. Schollers?
No.
Okay. There's no, excuse me? There's no one signed up on this. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the transmittal of the county executive and Planning Department's recommendation to the County Council. Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Okay. Next, we have Item, and we're going to proceed in this order, so let's give everyone a heads-up. After this one, we're going with Item 5, 6, 7, 12, 8, 9, 10, 3A. Okay. So I, I, you need me to repeat— Okay. So I I you need me to repeat that? 5, 6, 7, 12, 8, 9, 10, 3A. So right now, we're on Item 5, which is CP 93009-01 Cottrell Property Swan Creek Club. I'm going to do a check to make sure we have everyone we need. Anton Heath?
Present.
Sherry Connor?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Masak?
Present.
Okay, and that's it for this particular matter. So Mr. Heath, you're on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The representative for this case is the engineer, Zai Chalabi, but he was unable to sign up before the Wednesday 10:00 AM deadline.
Yeah.
However, he did provide earlier correspondence with staff, and again, he was in agreement with the finding that he did with staff report.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. For the record, I'm Anton Heath with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. Item 5 for you is Conservation Plan for Cottrell Property, CP-93009-01. Subject property is a site of an existing single-family dwelling, which is to be removed and replaced with a new single-family dwelling on 1.5 acre, on a 1.5 acre parcel overlooking the Potomac River in the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area. Slide 2, please. The site is located in southern French Georgia County within Planning Area 8 and Council District 8. Slide briefly. More specifically, the site is located on the west side of the intersection of Hattin Point Road and Swan Creek Road. Slide 4, please. Subject site is located in the RE Residential Estate Zone. It's bound to the north and south with properties who share same zone and rural residential zone properties to the east, developed with single-family attached dwellings. Next slide, please. Subject site is also located within the limited development overlay zone. Next slide, please. This area photographed shows the site and its current condition and the adjacent residential development properties. Next slide, please. Site map shows topography gradually sloping downhill from east to west towards the Potomac River. Next slide, please. The master plan right-of-way map shows that there are no master plan right-of-ways of butting the property. Next slide, please. This is a bird's eye view of the site from the west showing the existing dwelling. Next slide, please. This conservation plan shows the proposed single-family dwelling to be built in largely the same footprint as the existing dwelling. The property is accessed from the east. No trees will be removed on the site during the construction, and an A forest station area is being proposed between the dwelling and proportion of the existing asphalt driveway will be removed and partially replaced with impervious with impervious pavers. The plan also shows stabilization upgrades to the existing riverbank. And a multi-path will be laid from the front of the dwelling to the riverbank, which is shown in a bold black line. In conjunction with this conservation plan, the applicant has requested a variance from Section 5B-114E8 to exceed the 15% lot coverage allowed in the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Limited Development Overlay Zone. The existing site was developed prior to the CBCA regulations and has a lot coverage of 16.8%. The applicant's plan proposes to reduce the lot coverage to 15.3%, exceeding the allowable limit by 0.3%. Staff recommends approval of this variance in accordance with the required findings outlined on Page 7 through 10 of the technical staff report. Next slide, please. Although not required for the conservation plan, the applicant has provided elevations of the proposed dwelling. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the Planning Board adopt the findings and approve Conservation Plan CP-93009-01 and variance to Section 5B-114E8, subject to the four conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Heath. So in other words, with with this variation, which would take it from the 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 limit, the cap of 15% to 15.3%, with the variation, it would be an improvement of the current 16.8% impervious surface? That's what I understood?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so it works out better. Okay. Let's see if there's any questions for you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Dorner?
No question.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
I was looking at the the findings, and I'm a little, if you could better explain how this specific parcel of land has exceptional narrowness, shallowness, or shapes, exceptional topographic conditions, or other extraordinary situations or conditions. So I've read your the justification, but I don't see anything exceptional, narrow, shallow, or other extraordinary situation. So if you could help me understand how you came to that conclusion?
Yes, the issue with this particular site is that the existing dwelling is is pretty close to the waterfront in comparison to the street. So they had to have a pretty long driveway in order to get to the existing dwelling. That's what's contributing to the the large lot covered area. And in the CBC area, CBC, the Chesapeake Bay Critical Overlay Area, all of those lot coverages apply to the, they all count in this situation. So even if, so essentially, the majority of the lot coverage is is coming from that long driveway. So in this particular situation, to move the house to a different location or to it would actually end up increasing the the amount of lot surface. That particular situation is is why it was difficult to, that's why I felt it was difficult to, that was a challenge.
Okay. I I don't I don't understand how it's exceptional.
You know, I Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Madam Chair.
No, no, I didn't mean to interrupt you, so go ahead.
Just, I think those the regu, the Chesapeake regulations were put in for a reason. And I understand the theory that since it's now 16.8 and it's being reduced to 15.3, that's great, but that's still, why doesn't it go to 15?
Or 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 stay as it is at 16.8?
It's 16.8 now, existing, but that was built before the regulations, or any regulations.
So they have the option, they have the option now of keeping it at 16.8, too?
They do. They do.
So
But but it's a tear down, so that's why they don't have the option. Because basically, they're going to rebuild the entire thing.
But they don't have to.
That's true, they don't have to. But if they didn't have to, they wouldn't be before us right now.
No, that 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 may mean that they want to.
My question is, is that what is the difference if it went to 15? Or, and and that's, I'm asking that of staff. I just, you know, it's, I'm just a firm believer in the Chesapeake regulations. And if you give
Commissioner Holm?
You could 0.3 here, 0.4 here, 0.5 there, and we don't do justice to it.
Commissioner Holm, kill it.
Yes, who's speaking? Oh, Mr. Schneider? Okay.
I didn't get checked in, and I don't know why I didn't get checked in, but this is Chuck Schneider from the Environmental Planning Section.
I didn't have you on the list.
No matter, no matter what this project would have done improvement-wise, it would have had to gone through the variance process. And this process, the whole house is not being torn down, it's partially being torn down. So whatever the applicant wants to do, because it's over the the maximum 15%, it was previously built before regulations, it would need to come before you for a variance request. Except, it really doesn't meet the narrowness, the uniqueness of the property. The only thing is that it's meeting is that the property was built before the regulations, and it's now trying to conform to get under that 15%, or we're trying to get close to that 15%. The the length of the driveway is over, it's almost close to over 200 feet long. And to minimize that driveway to get, I mean, the house is, the house, all the existing structures and the patio area around that area is being reduced in size. And the the thing that's really hurting it is the driveway situation getting down there. I know that I've had a couple other projects that we've asked the property owner to reduce the size of the driveway, make it narrower to reduce the impervious surface area. But over time, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't work out. The thing is, it's over 200 feet long. If it, this was a smaller driveway and, oh, not a smaller, yeah.
Shorter, shorter.
It would, the impervious surface area would be reduced, but the house area, the the parking area you see there, and the all the various structures are being reduced. This property owner has gone well beyond what I'm expecting some of these people that have had the existing houses in the critical area to do. But it's not a total tear down. They're saving portions of the house to build this property. So, I mean, to build this new structure. Trying to figure out what other questions you've had there, but I I understand, I I was having troubles when I was doing the findings for the uniqueness of the narrowness. And the way that's worded, it really, I'm trying, I was trying really hard to find out how this would conform to it. But I mean, it's just that the property was built before all the regulations and even before that wording came out, so.
So so let me ask, let me make sure I understand. So basically, Mr. Schneider, it's obviously the property was built before the the regulations came, the CBCA ordinance came into play. And so now, the, in order to have granted variance, it has to meet those specified requirements. And and it may not be the the narrowness or the shallowness of the shape, but it could be, there are other, there's that caveat at the end, the catchall at the end, other extraordinary situations or conditions. And that long driveway is a huge factor. And in my mind, it satisfies the requirement here because of that.
That is correct.
Okay. Because it does
You're correct.
Thank you. Because it does have to meet the requirements. And and in my mind, that particular, the driveway situation does satisfy that aspect of the required finding.
You're correct.
Okay, so that's just my opinion. You know, we we may disagree, but. So let me go back to Commissioner Geraldo, if you have other questions.
No, one other question, just one more, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So am I correct that they have to put in about a quarter acre of new trees? Did I read that correctly?
Chuck Schneider from the Environmental Planning Section. Yes, they do. They need to afforest on the property, because there's no forest on the property as it is right now. And they they have to do the plantings on the property, and they're going to be, right now, they currently have it shown in the the front portion of the property. And when I was reviewing it, we were going back and forth with whether it had to be in the front and or in the 100-foot buffer. And we came to the decision that it needs to be in the in the 100-foot buffer area.
Up forest station, okay.
Yeah, thank you. And the last question I have is, I know, I know from other properties along that area, was there any concern about any archaeological items that might be there? I mean, that whole strip, I know that there's land further down Riverview that's on the on the Potomac, that there were archaeological items. And I was just wondering whether or not there was anything done here to consider if there is any ar- archaeological artifacts on this property.
Good morning. This is Sherry Connor with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. Given that the site was previously fully graded and disturbed, and the proposed development will take place within the developed area, there is no archaeological concerns with this site.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Okay, so if there are no other questions and there's no speakers, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Washington. I'm here to adopt the findings of staff and approve and variance to Section 5B-114E8, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Is there any discussion? Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, 5-0. We will now go to Item 6, which is Vacation 18005 Marlboro Gardens. I'm also going to do a check. Mr. Heath, it looks like it's your day today. Anton Heath? Okay. Which which is interesting, because he started during this this pandemic, and we've yet to see him in person. But you're hitting the ground running, Mr. Heath. Sherry Connor?
Present.
Nate Foreman? Mr. Foreman?
We see him.
Oh, okay, you see him?
Yeah, but I don't hear him.
He's muted.
Oh, okay, he's muted. I see him. Scroll back to the top. There he is, okay. So how do we get him unmuted? Well, he's present. Okay, so let me just go down the list and while you figure that part out. Okay. Mr. Masak?
Present.
Okay. Mr. Ferguson? Gwendolyn Bowman?
Here.
Charles Farmer? Dr. Charles Farmer?
Here.
Dr. Judy Farmer?
Here.
And then one more. Dr. Therese Farmer?
Here.
Is it Therese? Did I pronounce it correctly?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Okay. Okay, so are we figuring out how to get Mr. Foreman?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Foreman, I just want to make sure we can we can hear you first. Mr. Taub, is that you?
Yes, Madam Chair. I I signed up in time for this. I received a receipt. I couldn't hear my name called, but
No, I didn't have you sign, hello? I don't have you signed up on this, but I'll, so you signed up in time, you said, Mr. Taub?
Didn't. I had a receipt emailed to me, so I don't know what happened.
Okay, okay, sorry.
But in the event Mr. Foreman can't get himself unmuted.
Okay. Okay.
I muted my phone, Madam Chair. Can you hear me? This is Nate Foreman.
Yes, we can hear you. We can hear you. So either one of you, okay.
Mr. Foreman will handle this, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, Mr. Heath, you are on.
Good morning, Madam
Oh, wait a minute. He has to come back? You have to unmute unmute yourself again.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. For the record, I'm Anton Heath, senior final with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. Item number 6 on the agenda is vacation petition for Marlboro Gardens, CP-18005, the application request to vacay parcels A, B, and C of Marlboro Gardens and part of Nova Avenue. Next slide, please. The site is located in the western part of French Georgia County within Planning Area 75A and Council District 7. Next slide, please. More specifically, the site is located approximately 100 feet south of the intersection of Nova Avenue and Marlboro Pike. Avenue and Marlboro Pike. Slide, please. Site is located in the R18 multifamily median density zone. To the north are businesses in the MUI mixed-use infill zone. To the west is Boundary Avenue and Lord Avenue with residential properties in the R55 one-family detached residential and RT townhouse zones. To the south is the intersection of Boundary Avenue and Opus Avenue with residences in the R55 zone. And to the east, beyond Opus Avenue are residential properties in the R55 zone. Next slide, please. The area, the map shows the property of what's Marlboro Pike Sector Plan Area Development District Overlet. Next slide, please. Photograph shows that the subject site is currently vacant and also shows surrounding properties and roadways. Next slide, please. Site map shows that the, it's a property, the site gradually slopes from the center of the property towards northeast as well as the west and southwest. Next slide. Master plan right-of-way map shows the master plan collector roadway, Marlboro Pike connects to the portion of Nova Avenue outside of the property boundary. Next slide, please. Exhibit A shows the existing record flat for parcels A, B, and C and the portion of Nova Avenue outlined in red, which is, which are proposed to be vacated. Next slide. Exhibit, is the flat of consultation showing the total area of the vacated outlined in red. Next slide. If this vacation's petition is approved, the applicant will be required to obtain approval of a minor flat, of a minor final flat incorporating the vacated area. This slide shows the draft minor flat, or draft minor final flat submitted by the applicant, which depicts the consolidation of the area to be vacated and future dedication of the public act for determinants of Nova Avenue. In conclusion, the subdivision zoning staff recommends that the planning group adopt the findings and approve the Marlboro Gardens vacation petition, V-18005, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Heath. Let's see if there are any questions for you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
Okay, no, I see, he mentioned condition, but I see it precedes his final recommendation, so thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dornar?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Foreman?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the planning board, Nate Foreman with the office of O'Malley Miles, Milan and Gilmore with offices in Greenville, here on behalf of the applicant in this case. And I do want to thank staff for all their hard work in helping us get this first step of our long development process off the ground. And I want to state for the record that we agree with our complaining staff recommendation and request that the planning board approve our development application. I know there are members of the community civic association on the line here, so rather than kind of throwing on here, you know, if there's any other questions or concerns, I'm more than willing to address them, but I just want to ask the planning board for request approval of this application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Foreman. I have two people signed up as proponents and then three with no position. So, Mark Ferguson, do you wish to speak or just, like you said, if there are any questions?
No, ma'am, just answer questions, thank you.
Okay. I have Gwenlin Bowman from the Bradbury Boulevard Heights Civic Association signed up in support. Ms. Bowman? Hold on, we're getting to you.
Hello?
Okay, Ms. Bowman, yeah. See, sometimes we don't, we can't tell what the, if your name, if you didn't put a name in, we can't tell. We see callers with a number, but we don't know who it is. So, I think that, okay, so Ms. Bowman, you can go forward.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. This is Gwen Bowman, president of the Bradbury Boulevard Heights Civic Association. And we're, it's the consensus of the membership that we're in agreement with vacationing that section of Nova Avenue that will run in the section of the Marlboro Gardens building. And we're looking forward to the development.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowman. We appreciate, was that it?
Yes.
We appreciate it, thank you. So then we have a couple other members of the Bradbury Boulevard Heights Civic Association. Dr. Charles Farmer, do you wish to speak?
We're going to defer to Dr. Therese Farmer, she will have information.
Okay.
And we'll take it from there.
Okay, so that's Dr. Charles Farmer who's deferring to Dr. Therese Farmer. Dr. Judy Farmer, is that your position as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm glad you all named Farmer since you're that close in proximity with no masks. Okay, okay. Dr. Therese Farmer, would you wish, we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, and greetings to all the board, and I see Mr. Foreman. I do, I would like to first thank Mr. Foreman for his communication consistency with our family. Our family is the house on Exhibit B that is lot number one.
Okay, hold on, hold on a second. We're going to pull it up so that the board can see where your house is, okay? So we're going to catch up with you. Okay.
On Exhibit.
Exhibit B. And I should, but I don't have exhibits.
You can also see it on Exhibit A as well.
Okay.
And we are the corner, the lot one, corner house of Nova Avenue and Boundary.
Okay.
1442, address 1442 Nova Avenue.
Can you, can you guide, Mr. Flanagan, who's trying to put the cursor near your house, can you guide him? Can you see the cursor? That's it?
Yes.
That's it?
People go to that little, not, not there, people go to that little corner, right there, that little plot of land, move up a little, right there, that little space where it says lot one on the corner of Boundary. I think it says on the older map, R Street.
Yeah.
That's it right there, because I can't read that print.
Yes, it's a little bit, but it's very, it's very, very small.
Okay.
On the actual Exhibit A, it says found stone. I don't know if you can see that, but it's that little spot right there.
Is that one right there? That's it, right there, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, that part.
Okay.
Thank you. We've been in this home for 40 years, 40-plus years, and I wanted to, like I said before, thank Mr. Nate Foreman for his communication and his, who he represents for the property in regards to concerns or anything we have had in the past, so I wanted to say that first. I also wanted to just add a question regarding the vacated property, which we are in favor of as a family. We have also spoken to some of our neighbors as well. They live in the adjacent properties to Marlboro Gardens, who is also, also in favor of keeping it closed. But we just want, our, our only concern was maintaining the security of that spot that will be vacated in the future. It has been nothing on the property since apartments were originally raised many years ago. But in many, over the years, there have been different criminal activity that have occurred right there in the middle of the street where there are currently cement blocks. For example, and we have worked with the local police department and the fire investigators on these issues. So our biggest thing is would it be signage or cameras to deter people from congregating in that area because there have been barbecues prior to the holiday seasons, there have been fires and fireworks prior to the 4th of July holiday, and there was an attempted arsonist car, arsonist activity that had happened there, and the police did inform us that this street was to be closed, that there would need to be some kind of surveillance, signage, or cameras in that area to deter people from congregating into there and trespassing on the property. I did speak to Mr. Foreman and the person he represents on maintaining the fencing, which they redid because people had cut the fencing and went into the property, so they did redo the fencing. But after the attempted arson of a car that was left in the street right on their side of the property, the police did inform me that more surveillance would need to happen to ensure that things like this doesn't occur in the future. Now, as a family, we have been proactive and we would like to thank this Bridget Miles at 3114, accepting our request of completing the no dumping fines, the deer crossing signs because the deer think that's a park now, so there's plenty of deer over that, so we requested deer crossing signs, and so that has assisted in different issues and people traveling through the neighborhood, not hitting the deers. And then I would also like to thank Mr. Mark Fowler for assisting us with the traffic study that was completed so that we were able to get the lines in between Nova and Boundary and also the future upcoming speed bumps. And we just received our no parking signs on Boundary Avenue. But that was my only question was based on the communication with the police officers and the fire investigators was what would be the continued or advanced surveillance and security of that particular vacated section of Nova to ensure that the community is maintaining a safe environment and that even though we can be proactive, we are not always there and that since no one is currently living in the property, to make sure that all people and residents are safe. And I thank the board for allowing us to speak as the Farmer family at this occasion. Thank you.
Well, let me just say this, it's wonderful to see very proactive people, so that's good. People who are, who, we all care about our homes, but people who have taken the necessary steps and reached out to the appropriate entities to, to get the assistance that you need, and apparently you've been very successful with that. So that's good, congratulations on that. Some of what you have asked for, we, we, the board are not in a position to provide that kind of, or answer that question in terms of the, the security. Your conversations with Mr. Foreman hopefully have been productive and he can, and we can also, the way we can assist is from one government entity to another to, you know, see if we can get the county, the, the police and whatnot to continue to monitor there. And Mr. Foreman, do you have some solution, some advice?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. And I do want Dr. Farmer to want to thank you for, you know, keep our surprise in the situation. The arson and the fireworks, that is actually unfortunately news to me and I'm very excited about that to happen. I do want to say that, you know, when it comes to the immediate security measures, I'm more than happy to reach out to the applicant and see what we can kind of do in the meantime. I do want to let you know and reassure you that when we go forward with the development plans for this property, which we are doing, we will take into account security of not just our property, but neighboring properties too. But, you know, I think we maybe, you and I and our client maybe should have a conversation offline about what to do about the current property as it is right now while it's being developed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Foreman, and we know that your client has even met us at our home and met with us.
At night.
So we, we will be open to that communication in the future, and we do have your contact information as well as your client, so we will be reaching out to set up those appointments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, with that, does, let me see if the board has any questions of anyone thus far. Madam Vice Chair?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions, but I did notice that the Civic Association President, Ms. Gwen Bowman, is on, and she is certainly a good contact for them to continue communicating about issues in that community. She is always on target.
Wonderful. Okay. Commissioner Washington?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dornar?
No questions.
Mr. Foreman, is there anything else you want to say in conclusion?
No, just, I think, you, Madam Chair, and the board for their time and, uh, better.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve V-18005 along with the associated condition as outlined in staff's report. Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five zero. Thank you. Next, we have items.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have item seven, which is detailed site plan 19060 for McDonald's Landover. Okay, so I'm going to do a check to make sure we have everyone. Adam Bossi?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, present.
Okay, wonderful. Jill Kosak?
Good morning, present.
Thank you. Dan Lynch?
Present.
Okay, we do have Chuck Snyder signed up on this one. Mr. Snyder?
Present.
Okay, Ben Ryan?
Good morning, I'm present.
Chris Howell? Joseph Kurtow? Mr. Kurtow?
Good morning, present.
Okay, did I pronounce it correctly?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you. John Idberger?
Yes, present, thank you.
Okay, Karen Peter?
Yes, present.
Okay, and that concludes the sign-up list for us for today. Mr. Bossi, you're on.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman and members of the planning board. For the record, again, I am Adam Bossi with the Urban Design Section. Before you this morning is item number seven, Detailed Site Plan DSP 19060 for McDonald's Landover. This DSP proposes to raise the existing eating and drinking establishment with drive-through service and replace it with a new slightly larger McDonald's restaurant. Slide two, please. The subject property is in planning area 72, Council District 5. Slide three, please. The subject site, shown here in red, is shown here in red, excuse me, the 1.17 acre site is located on, in the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Maryland 214, that's Central Avenue and Bright Seat Road. Slide four, please. The site is located, or excuse me, the site is zoned mixed-use infill, the MUI zone, with single-family residential development located to the north and commercial development on mixed-use and industrial zone properties to the west and south. Beyond Bright Seat Road to the east is undeveloped land in the I-3 zone. Slide five, please. The site is also within two overlay zones, the military installation overlay zone for height associated with Joint Base Andrews, and one of the development district overlay zones associated with the subregion four master plan and sectional map amendment. The site is within the development district overlay zone focus area for Central Avenue between Norrare Avenue and Bright Seat Road. Slide six, please. This aerial photo shows the existing McDonald's building located in the western half of the subject site and oriented perpendicular to Central Avenue. This McDonald's was built on the site over 30 years ago. Since that time, the zoning of the site changed in a manner that no longer allowed the eating and drinking establishment use, and it was certified as non-conforming through a special exception approved in 1987. Somewhat unique to this case is that while the DSP proposes to raise and construct a new eating and drinking establishment, the subregion four master plan includes an exemption that provides as long as the legally existing established use is not discontinued for 180 days or more, it is not subject to the development district standards or site plan review. Here, the applicant has indicated that they intend to discontinue the use for less than that 180-day period to redevelop the site. That being said, this DSP focuses only on the physical changes proposed to the site as the use is legally established and intended to be continued. A detailed note about this master plan exemption is included in the development data summary on the top. on the top of page four of the technical staff report. Slide seven, please. As shown here on the top of graphic map, the subject site is relatively flat. Slide eight, please. Here, we have Central Avenue shown to the south of the site in red, which is an arterial road, and Bright Seat Road to the east of the site is shown in green and is classified as a collector roadway. Slide nine, please. As shown here, the existing McDonald's site includes three driveways, two connecting to Central Avenue, which are essentially flanking the building, and a third in the northeast corner of the site connecting to Bright Seat Road. There's also two sidewalk connections to Central Avenue adjacent to the building. Drive-through service is routed to the north of the building with a service window on the west side of it. To the north, you can see that there is an existing wooden fence along the property line between this development and the adjacent residential dwellings. Slide 10, please. The overall development plan for the site provides for raising of the existing building and constructing a new McDonald's. The new building will be 4,540 square feet, which is 178 square feet larger than the existing structure. The orientation of the proposed structure has its length parallel to Central Avenue. The development district overlay zone includes a number of design guidelines and requirements geared toward the establishment of vibrant pedestrian-friendly mixed-use environments. While the proposed project generally conforms with the development district overlay zone requirements, the applicant has requested amendments to certain requirements, specifically those pertaining to building envelope, siding of the structure, streetscape, and loading space. For example, the proposed McDonald's site does not conform with the overlay zone's 18-foot build-to-line requirement. As visible in this image, the building is set back farther than 18 feet from either of the adjacent roadways, and this is to accommodate the drive-through service lane and a bypass lane to the south and east of the building, which we believe is appropriate for this type of development. Other features, such as an outdoor dining space with clear pedestrian connections to Bright Seat and Central Avenue, which are located on the east side of the building, and the orientation of the building parallel to Central Avenue, are in line with the intent of the development district overlay guidelines for defining the streetscape and again looking to improve the area for use by pedestrians. This McDonald's site is at the eastern terminus of the development district overlay zone, so the provision of these pedestrian-friendly elements, again on the east side of the site, are particularly important here, where the site acts as a entrance, if you will, to the development district where these types of features are ultimately desired by the master Excuse me, the DDOZ amendments requested by the applicant are discussed in detail on pages six through nine of the technical staff report. Slide 11, please. This rendered site plan provides a clearer view of the proposed development and key design features. The proposed building is shown in tan with the double drive-through and ordering line located on the west side of the building and continuing to the service window on its south side. As shown, one of the site's driveway connections to Central Avenue has been removed. And as previously noted, on the east side of the building, the DSP does provide the outdoor eating area, bike racks, and crosswalk connections to Bright Seat Road and Central Avenue, which are pedestrian-friendly site features encouraged by the development district overlay. A total of 48 parking spaces are provided to the north and west of the building, with a single loading space located west of the McDonald's building and north of the driveway connection to Central Avenue. Slide 12, please. Site lighting is proposed to be updated as part of this DSP. As shown in the photometric plan, sufficient lighting will be provided on-site while emitting off-site glare. Slide 13, please. As shown here, the single-story McDonald's building is a total of 19 feet tall, again with that area of 4,540 square feet. This is again slightly larger than the existing building. The façades are to be primarily clad with brick veneer and hardy plank siding, and the complementary color scheme is shown in gray, brown, and black. Slide 14, please. A series of small directional signs is proposed for utilization around the site. An existing pylon sign located at the southeast corner of the site is proposed to be maintained. Three building mounting signs, identity signs, excuse me, are also provided. Madam Chairwoman, in conclusion, this detailed site plan for the redevelopment of this McDonald's eating and drinking establishment with drive-through service conforms with the applicable requirements of zoning ordinance and development district overlay zone, subject to the conditions and findings recommended in the technical staff report. Additionally, as noted in the presentation and detailed in the staff report, staff does support the applicant's requested amendments to the development district overlay zone requirements. It's our understanding that the applicant's team is in full concurrence with the findings and conditions of the staff report. And with that, Madam Chairwoman, staff is pleased once again to recommend that the planning board approve DSP 19060 for McDonald's Landover with the conditions included in the staff report. That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bossi. That's great flight. Okay, Mr. Lynch?
Good morning, Madam Chair. For the Parker Dan Lynch with the law firm of Mac Mahoney here on behalf of McDonald's Corporation. With me I have Joe Kurtow of McDonald's, John Idberger with Seven, and then also Chris Howell, our civil engineer with Kimley Horn. As indicated by Mr. Bossi, McDonald's Corporation is in concurrence with the staff's findings and the proposed conditions and recommendation. As you know, you've seen many of these applications come through, this is part of an overall modernization program that McDonald's is implementing at various sites throughout Prince George's County and actually throughout the entire country. I'd like to thank Mr. Bossi, he came up with some excellent suggestions which we ended up incorporating into overall site plan, and I think it had led to a much better plan in the end. With that, we're here to answer any questions you have. Again, we have both representatives of McDonald's and the civil engineering firm in the event there are any questions or comments from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Lynch. I'm going to see if the board has any questions of either Mr. Bossi or you, Mr. Lynch. Madam Vice Chair?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Madam Chair, I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Duonner?
No questions.
Okay, so let's see, and Mr. Idberger?
Yes, this is John, and I'm representing the applicant.
Okay, and, okay, so, and so all of you, and Ms. Peter, and Mr. Kurtow, and Mr. Howell are all here if there's any questions, is that correct? I think that's what Mr. Lynch said, okay. Okay, so if the board has any, no questions, and Mr. Bossi, you have nothing else to add?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, so let's, let's go. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve the alternative development district standards as outlined in staff's report, items A, 1 through 8, in addition to approving DSP-19060 along with the condition as outlined in staff's report. Second, Bailey?
Okay, so Madam Vice Chair, motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair?
Both aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Duonner?
Both aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Both aye.
Okay, the ayes have it five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next we're going to item 12. Thank you. Next, we're going to item 12, which was formerly 4D. And that is final plat 5-91004 Grayling, parcel A variation. Sherry Connor, are you on?
Yes, present.
Okay, Mr. Gibbs, are you on?
Good morning, Madam Chair, yes, Ed Gibbs here, I am on.
Okay, and Mark Ferguson? We're scrolling down looking for you, Mark Ferguson.
Madam Chair, this is Ed Gibbs again. I had asked Mark Ferguson to be available for any questions. I think he is on, but I don't know that he's unmuted.
Okay, so we're trying to find him on the screen here. Everybody's unmuted, so. Mark Ferguson? Okay, well, all right, if you need him, Ed, you'll have to find him. Okay. Okay, so Mr. Masog?
Present, Madam Chair.
Brian Barnett Woods?
Present.
Okay, and then we have two exhibits. We have the letter from Mr. Gibbs dated July 8, 2020, and we have proposed revised conditions, so they will be applicant's exhibits one and two. Okay, so Ms. Connor, do you want to go for it?
Yes, good morning, once again, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, this is Sherry Connor with the subdivision and zoning section. As you indicated, item 12 is the final plat of subdivision for Grayling parcel A, which has been filed in conformance with section 24111C of the subdivision regulations for the re-subdivision of a plat recorded prior to October 27, 1970. It's been filed along with a variation request from section 24121A3 of the subdivision regulations for direct access to an arterial roadway. The site is proposed for redevelopment as a consolidated storage facility. The two exhibits provided by the applicant will be discussed further in this presentation. Next slide, please. The site is located in the northern area of Prince George's County within Planning Area 69 in Council District 5. Next slide, please. More specifically, the site is located on the south side of Maryland 450 Annapolis Road at the intersection with 68th Avenue. Next slide, please. The site is located within the MUI zone and surrounded by properties in the MUI and R18 zone. Next slide, please. The site is also located within the development district overlay zone, subject to the 2010 approved Central Annapolis Road Sector Plan. Next slide, please. The aerial photograph shows the subject site is currently developed with building used as a daycare which is to be raised. Surrounding properties are developed with commercial uses abutting the site to the northeast and the southwest, and multifamily development southeast of the site. Next slide, please. The site map shows the topographical features of the subject site with steep slopes falling to the east. Next slide, please. The master plan right-of-way map shows Maryland 450 and arterial roadway abutting the site to the north. Section 24121A3 of the subdivision regulations requires that when lots are proposed, the land adjacent to an existing or planned roadway of arterial higher classification, they shall be designed to front on an interior street or service road. The applicant is requesting a variation from this requirement to maintain access for Maryland 450 as no other roadways above the site. The required findings for approval of the variation are further outlined on pages seven through nine of the technical staff report. In accordance with the requirements of section 24111C, a transportation analysis was conducted including vehicular and bicycle and pedestrian adequacy for the site, and determined that adequate transportation facilities will exist to serve the site with the recommended conditions. Next slide, please. This is a bird's eye view showing the existing development on the site which is to be raised. Next slide, please. The current plat shows the site as lot seven of the Grayling subdivision, recorded in 1960. Next slide, please. The proposed plat depicts the property with its boundaries unchanged. Water, sewer, police, and fire and rescue facilities are found to be adequate to serve the subject site. Staff recommends approval of the final plat of subdivision 5-19004 for Grayling parcel A and the variation from section 24121A3, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Mr. Gibbs for the applicant has provided a letter dated July 8, 2020, outlining additional information relevant to the site, including a recently approved detailed site plan, which was conditioned to provide additional space within the proposed building for office use. Although this information was not provided or analyzed during the review of this final plat application, the proposal provides for a marginal change to the site's trip generation, and staff agrees that the findings and condition may be updated to reflect the additional area and vehicle trips which will have no impact on the adequacy of transportation facilities for the site. Mr. Gibbs has also provided a revised conditions exhibit reflecting the increased trip cap in condition one, which staff is in agreement with, and revisions to condition three for the timing of the installation of a bus shelter and its improvements. Although staff is not in agreement with the language provided by the applicant for condition three, staff has revised language that is acceptable and was coordinated with the applicant, which I will read into the record. Condition three should be revised to state, prior to the approval of any building permit for development within the subdivision, the applicant, their heirs, successors, and/or signs shall show that all required off-site, adequate pedestrian, and bikeway facilities listed below have a) full financial assurances, b) have been permitted for construction through the applicable operating agency's access permit process, and c) have an agreed-upon timetable for construction and completion with the appropriate operating agency. A) a shelter-ready bus stop location for the bus stop at 68th Avenue and Maryland 450 Annapolis Road in accordance with the Department of Permitting Enforcement and Inspections and Department of Public Works and Transportation Standards, and b) a bus shelter at the bus stop at 68th Avenue and Maryland 450 Annapolis Road in accordance with DPWNT practices. This concludes staff's presentation.
So, okay, Ms. Connor, so, so you were taking some of his suggestions and applying them to the conditions as set forth on page nine of the staff report, and it would start with prior to, it wasn't, it wasn't prior to, it was prior to permits, what was it? Prior to any building permit?
Prior to the.
Building. Go ahead.
Yes, prior to the approval of any building permit for development within the subdivision.
Okay, got it. Okay, let's see if there are any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Duonner?
No questions.
Okay, all righty then, Mr. Gibbs? Hold on, we're trying to unmute you. Okay, Mr. Gibbs?
Okay, great. Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, yes, Chairwoman Hewland, members of the board, Edward Gibbs, an attorney with Office of Largo, representing the applicant, JSM Management LLC here this morning. My letter of July 8 goes into greater detail relative to the trip cap. When we did the detailed site plan, which you'll probably remember for this consolidated storage facility back in January, we did talk about trip generation there, but we appreciate staff working with us on the trip cap issue here because we, not they, but we did not include the two AM and two PM trips attributable to the 1,000 square foot community office incubator space. So it's a marginal increase in the trip cap, it doesn't affect the critical level, the CLVs, at any intersection, and doesn't impact the level of service which exists in this, at the intersection of 68th and 450. So we would appreciate being able to just increase those two trips to accurately reflect the trip generation. Relative to the condition number three, I only have two comments, and I did, the first comment I did speak with Ms. Connor about, or communicate via email about yesterday. The, I had a conversation with Sal Abraham on DEPOT yesterday afternoon, and relative to permitting of the bus shelter, you know, we had actually proffered the bus shelter as a pedestrian bike facility for this project, and we are fully supportive of that. What Mr. Abraham told me yesterday afternoon is that relative to the bus shelter, he told me that if DEPOT is involved in this, there will never be a permit for the bus. there will never be a permit for the bus shelter because their contractor will actually do the installation. So I had originally proposed putting the words, quote, "if required", close quote, after the phrase that Ms. Connor read, which states, "B, have been permitted for construction through the applicable operating agency's access permit process." I proposed putting in the words "if required." He correctly came back and said, "Well, as we've redrafted Condition 3, it just mimics the applicable language of Section 24-12401b," and she is absolutely correct. So just as long as everybody understands that whatever the appropriate operating agency is going to require is what we're going to do, I just don't want to be in a situation where we come back and say, "Wait a minute, you never got a permit for the bus shelter," and I'm sitting there saying, "Well, there is no permit." So that clarification, and I think staff is fine with that. The only other item I would say is that we had proposed a shelter just west of the site, which is near 68th Avenue and 450. The only thing I would say is that the way the condition reads, 68th Avenue is on the other side of 450, and you had included a condition in our detailed site plan approval that required us, prior to certification of the site plan, to submit an exhibit showing the proposed location for the bus shelter. So I have no problem with this language, as long as everybody understands that the ultimate location is going to be approved either by Deepi or the State Highway Administration, and it will be in the vicinity of the area where 68th hits 450, but it's going to be on the south side of 450, not the north side. With that being said, I'm fine with staff's amended conditions, and I appreciate that Ms. Connor was able to work with us to get this resolved this afternoon. Thank you very much.
So Ms. Connor, the two concerns raised by Mr. Gibbs, can they be addressed as findings? Regarding the precise location, he's saying it's going to be in the vicinity of 68th, number one, and number two, you know, to address the issue of the permit, so if it can be clearly set forth in the findings, so that any subsequent body coming along, you know, there's a record of it. And number two, Mr. Gibbs, I'm going to write down that you said, I'm writing this down, and you said, "Ms. Connor is absolutely correct." Okay, that's in my notes now.
That is true.
Okay.
Yes, we can add those findings.
Okay, and that should address, and eliminate any confusion later on, okay? So let's see if the, okay, so let's see if the board has any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions. Madam Chair, are we going to label for purposes of information applicant exhibit number one, the proposed?
The letter was applicant exhibit number one, and the proposed revised conditions were exhibit number two.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. No questions.
Okay, okay, Commissioner Donner?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you asked the question, but I don't know if Ms. Connor's completely answered whether or not everything else was totally fine on the two conditions.
So staff is in agreement with Condition 1 proposed by Mr. Gibbs, the revisions, and Condition 3 should be revised, as I had read into the record.
Exactly. Okay, and there was no other problems that you had with anything else that Mr. Gibbs had proposed?
No.
All right, all right, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that that concluded the parties wishing to speak. I don't know that Mr. Masag or Mr. Bryant and Barnett Woods had anything to add. Are you all okay?
Nothing. This is Tom Masag, nothing to add.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Bryant, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if Mr. Gibbs, you have nothing else to add, I'm going to call for a motion.
Thank you very much, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Washington, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and that the findings be amended based on the recent discussion and testimony regarding the revisions to Condition number one as outlined in applicant exhibit number two, in addition to two findings being added, which address the location of the bus stop and the permits, the timing of permits. And with that approved, final plat of subdivision 5-19004 and variation from Section 24-121a3, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report, and Condition number one, as I mentioned earlier, further revised by applicant exhibit number two. Condition two is outlined in staff's report, and then Condition three as revised and read into the record by staff.
We have a motion. We have a second by Madam Vice Chair. I'm going to call for the vote. Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, five zero. So I think
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think what we should do at this point in time, it's almost quarter to 12, is take just a few minutes bio break, health break, and then come back and restart with item eight, and then we'll go to nine, 10, and 3A. Okay? Does that work?
Works.
So 10 minutes, okay? Thanks. Did you hear that? Yeah, okay, we're good. Okay, there she is. Loving her hat. Okay, so it's one down. Where's the rest of our peeps? Oh, I, we don't have, oh, my view is different. Okay, okay, okay. Oh, yeah, we do. Oh, all we need is May I say you all look marvelous?
Back to you.
The things that make us happy. It's the small things.
I got on mine, I was looking for a census bowtie, and I couldn't find any.
Ah, well.
I would guess that Manny probably already had one, though.
We'll look into that.
If not, he will create one, that's
Oh, so David, David, are you saying you want one, or you like it, or both? Okay, okay, I hear. Okay, so we got Manny there, okay. So Manny looks like one of these, those little bike riders in ET, the guy who's carrying ET over in front of the moon. Okay, all right, let me, okay, let's get back to work here. So we have our board back and present, and then our next item on the agenda is item eight, which is SDP 1601-03 Parkside, Section 4. I am going to check to make sure we have everyone that we need. We have Andrew Bishop, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, present.
Jill Kosak, are you on?
Present.
Rob Antonetti, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here.
Okay, Kim Finch, are you on? Kim Fitch. There she is. Kim Finch? She's muted, okay. Kim?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay, wonderful. Glenn Burton?
Present.
Noel Smith? I don't really see her, but you've got it, right? You've got it, Mr. Burton. Okay. She might be on there, but you can keep checking. Helen Hassan? Sue, what says Helen? Helen Hassan? Okay, all right. Rachel Letzinger? She's muted. Rachel Letzinger? She's, you have her muted. Okay, Rachel, you have to unmute yourself. All right, I'm going to come back. Basim Khatan?
I'm present.
Okay, Keith Tunnel, Chanel? Keith? Okay. Arthur Horn?
Madam Chair, Rachel, Keith, and Arthur are with the applicant, but they're really only there to listen or answer questions if asked, so I'll fill in if necessary if they can unmute or if they want.
Okay. Wes Guckert?
Present.
That's what I call, loud and clear. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Guckert. Okay, now that concludes the sign up list, and if you need them, Mr. Antonetti, you can, you'll figure out how to get them, okay. So with that, we do have two exhibits. We have applicant's temporary trail signage exhibit, which we will call applicant's exhibit number one, and then we have applicant's proposed revised conditions, which we will call applicant's exhibit number two, and both are accepted into the record, okay? And the, oh, excuse me, and the Deepi referral dated July 1, 2020, and that would be, I guess, I guess that's, did you submit that, Mr. Antonetti? No, that'll
I did not.
Okay, we'll call it, we'll call it staff exhibit number one. Okay. Thank you. With that, okay, with that, Mr. Bishop, you are on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. For the record, Andrew Bishop with the urban design section, item eight is an SDP application, which proposes the development of a mixed retirement, development consisting of 188 single-family detached and 96 single-family attached dwellings in Section 4 of Parkside. The applicant has submitted additional information prior to the Wednesday deadline, and will be proposing revised conditions, and is prepared to discuss these and the exhibits, if it is, if the board would like the applicant to elaborate on them. Slide two, please. The site is in Planning Area 78, Council District 6. Slide three, please. The property is located on the east and west sides of Melwood Road, south of West Felia Road. Slide four, please. The site is in the RM zone within Section 4 of the larger Parkside development. This section of Parkside is surrounded by single-family detached homes and vacant land to the north, east by Section 7 of Parkside, west by Section 2, and Proposed Rock Spring Drive, and south by Section 3 and Central Park Drive. Slide five, please. The site is in the noise impact zone and the height zone, D and E, of the military installation overlay zone, which requires the residential development to meet specific requirements. The proposed single-family detached and attached buildings meet these regulations and are further discussed on page 11 of the technical staff report. Slide six, please. This aerial shows the property, which is currently under construction and is outlined on the slide here in red. Slide seven, please. The site includes varied topography, and the impacts to the regulated environmental features on site have been previously approved, and no new impacts are proposed with this application. Slide eight, please. This slide shows the master plan rights of way which abut the property. These include the proposed collector, Rock Spring Drive, west of the site, shown in green, and the major collector of Central Park Drive in blue. Slide nine, please. This exhibit shows the overall site plan of the Parkside development with Section 4 highlighted in yellow, showing its relationship to the rest of the community. For orientation purposes, you can see that this portion of the development is centrally located and directly north of Section 3 and north of the future Central Park. Slide 10, please. This is the illustrative site plan submitted with the application, and shows the single-family attached and detached dwellings on the site, which are arranged in a modified grid pattern. The development includes a number of open spaces and pocket parks with passive and active recreational facilities for the residents. The Melwood Legacy Trail is a 10-foot wide hiker-biker trail, which runs through the middle of Section 4 and forms the spine of the community, linking the development to Sections 5 and 6 south of the subject site. Slide 11, please. A mix of single-family attached and detached alternatives are proposed with the application and are designed with master down options to appeal to the senior population. The following elevations were provided by the applicant and showed the character of the proposed buildings. This slide shows three front-loaded two-car garage models that are proposed for the 96 single-family attached dwellings, including the Flow, Awaken, and Connect models. Slide 12, please. This slide shows the rear elevation of these models. Slide 13, please. And lastly, this slide shows the proposed side elevations. Slide 14, please. The following slides will show the single-family detached models proposed with the application. This slide shows the Adventurer. Slide 15, please. Multiple elevations are available for this model and offer a variety of architectural options. Slide 16. This slide shows the single-family detached model, the Curator. Slide 17, please. Again, multiple elevations are offered and include balanced fenestration, enhanced window trim, and roofed porches over the front doors. Slide 18, please. This slide shows the third single-family detached model, the Enthusiast. Slide 19, please. The alternative elevation shown here proposed different roof lines and porch options. Slide 20, please. Lastly, this slide shows the fourth single-family detached model, the Virtuoso. Slide 20, please. The alternative elevation shown here proposed a variety of different building materials. All the architectural elevations for the single-family attached and detached models have been evaluated by staff and have been found acceptable. Slide 22, please. This exhibit highlights the pedestrian and road network of the community, includes sections of the roadways proposed with the application. The vehicular roadways are shown here in red, and the pedestrian network is shown in blue and green. In conclusion, the urban design section recommends the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve specific design plan SDP 1601-03 and Type 2 Tree Conservation Plan, TCP20142016-03 for Parkside, Section 4, subject to the conditions found in the staff report. The applicant has proposed revised condition language, which is included in your backup, and has been reviewed by staff, and staff is in agreement with the proposed language. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Let's see if there's any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Washington?
Yes, if we could go back to slide 13, please. I believe that's the one with the Flow, Connect, and Awaken. I believe that's the one with the Flow, Connect, and Awaken. Yeah, and, and just looking at the fenestration illustrated here, I'm, I'm wondering, what's in the, what's in the upper portion of those homes above the two windows?
On, on these slides, it's, um, it, it looks like it's a vinyl slide sighting option. I'll let the applicant.
No, 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 I, no, I'm, I'm wondering what, what, what the, is it actually a room? Because there are no windows on the upper portion of the home. Exactly, yeah, in those areas.
I'm gonna let Mr. Antonetti address, um, that question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bishop. Uh, yeah, because it looks, uh, I'll be curious to hear what Mr. Antonetti has to say. Thank you. No further questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, Commissioner Dorner?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo? Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Antonetti, you're on.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. Uh, for the record, Robert Antonetti with the law firm Shipland Horn. We're pleased that the applicant, SHF project owner, for this section four. Uh, with me today, I have, uh, we have Mr. Basim Katan, uh, Keith Tannell may be on the line. He's with, uh, the builder, Rachel Letzinger with Dewary, Wes Guckert, um, our, our transportation engineer, and, uh, John Ferrante's, uh, with me in cyberspace, but he is, uh, an essential part of the Shipland Horn team. I just wanted to thank him for his work on this. Uh, I'd also like to thank Mr. Bishop, uh, for his thorough review of the application and his willingness to interact with the applicant as we prepare for today's hearing. It's always appreciated. Uh, and again, I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but, um, I, I continue to be thoroughly impressed uh, with the staff, the planning board, and the technical aspects of these hearings. Uh, it is, it is quite, uh, it's quite a feat to do these, uh, week to week, and, um, you do it so seamlessly and professionally, and it's greatly appreciated. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Mr. Antonetti. Appreciate it.
With regards to, uh, section four, as Mr. Bishop stated, uh, this is, uh, the third revision of this, uh, specific design plan. We are so excited to bring this forward. This is the mixed retirement development, or MRD, portion of the Parkside project, at least the portion that's controlled by the applicant. And, uh, you know, the site is selling, well, the project overall is selling very well. It's one of the top-selling communities in Maryland. It was the top-selling community in Maryland prior, prior to COVID-19. I'm not sure how those, how that data is tracking right now, but it's doing very well. Uh, the mixed retirement component is a condition of the zoning. It is required, uh, to be located, uh, within the certain forces of the project. Section four is that portion of the project for our purposes, and it will be age-restricted, uh, well, with the appropriate covenants, uh, for 55 and older. Uh, the project today is very exciting because, um, as you know, uh, we, the development is very expensive. It's, uh, the Parkside site is on a beautiful rolling hill-type, uh, layout overall, and, uh, the site development is quite expensive for any section, uh, market, market for mixed retirement. Um, it's been challenging to find a mixed retirement partner or builder who'd be able to build and offer a lot price to justify the development costs overall for, uh, for bringing something to mar-, um, market. Fortunately, we have that situation here, and the elevations that you have seen, uh, I hope you would agree, um, are, are very exciting and very, uh, very interesting and, and well-diversified, uh, product elevation types that we think will be incredibly well-received in the market, um, and within the aging population uh, of the county and, and the region. So, um, we expect this to fall, falls, uh, to melt seamlessly with the overall fabric and success of the Parkside project to date. Um, with regards to the elevations that are, were shown, we do have slide 13 in front. Um, so what is above, um, uh, Commissioner Washington, is living space, uh, shown on that elevation? And, uh, while there's no windows shown there, um, there is conditions in the staff report, uh, dealing with high-visibility lots and, and wall features. Um, you know, these are, these, these aren't fully optioned, uh, elevations, so, uh, so changes to the side elevations are, are possible, um, you know, as, as buyers, you know, select what they, what their preferences be, um, when they, when they go to contract. You know, with regards to the project overall, you know, while it is part of Parkside, um, there are ample amenities. It's quite a well amenitized section. Um, you did hear about, uh, see a slide about the pedestrian connectivity, um, including, um, internal trails, connector trails, uh, and the master plan trail, which is the Melwood Legacy Trail. Melwood Legacy Trail is essentially following the road alignment of, uh, Historic Melwood Road, and it continues through the Central Park, which is a, a large kind of regional park area that, um, has been dedicated, uh, to the mission, and so it will, will be a connection to that to the northernmost, uh, uh, portion of the project. Um, there are other, other amenities, um, that are significant that include, um, in addition to the open spaces shown, there's picnic pavilion, exercise stations, butterfly garden, a dog park, bocce ball court, and then there's also sitting area with, uh, with a pavilion as well. Um, so, so these amenities, while they are not, um, exclusive to section four, uh, in other words, we can't, uh, prohibit other members of the Parkside community from using them, uh, they are proximate to section four, and section four being kind of the northernmost, uh, uh, the northeasternmost quadrant of this large project, uh, will very likely be, uh, mainly utilized, uh, by the, uh, by the age-restricted, uh, senior component that will be populating section four if this application is approved. Um, the H, uh, there will be an HOA, a separate HOA, uh, for this, uh, section. The HOA will maintain, um, landscape elements, um, the front and side yards, and there will be an option for maintenance of the rear yard. Um, so, some of these homes may have fenced rear yards, if that's an option of, of the owner. If they do, um, they'll, they'll either maintain it themselves and, you know, plant their own gardens and landscaping, um, or, uh, they'll have the option to have that maintained as well. But the HOA will maintain other aspects of this, uh, area. Uh, with, with that, again, we're very excited, uh, I won't belabor, um, the, the presentation, but, uh, we're, we're very excited to move this forward with your support. Um, we do have some recommended condition changes. Otherwise, um, mark it as applicant exhibit two. Otherwise, we, uh, believe that the application meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance for approval in SDP, including past, uh, past conditions. And, um, I can go through the, uh, uh, condition changes, um, at the discretion of the board, um, quickly or, or, or not. Uh, but staff is in agreement with the language, um, and we are, uh, uh, very thankful for the, uh, opportunity to present this today. Um, the rest of our team, we're here to answer any questions that you may have, and, uh, you know, we look forward, um, and urge your support for this, uh, wonderful application. So, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, and I'll be willing to go through the conditions if that would be the preference.
Mr. Antonetti, just succinctly, if you could, I think the first one is fine. 1C is fine because it says unless modified by DPI, which makes sense. And then you have a, a lot of deletions, um, and, and, okay.
Yes. Uh, the, the deletions really are, are in recognition of, there, there was a plan set, as you know, um, materials need to be resubmitted no later than 35 days prior to the hearing. There was a subsequent plan set that contained many of these details. And then the, and an exercise of efficiency was to make sure that any, uh, pre-certification conditions, you know, actually reflect the plans that, that the staff actually had as part of the review.
Okay.
So, um, condition 1B, um, E, F, um, all those either materials or changes to the plans largely been made. So, I think the staff recognized after, uh, a conference call that, yes, they have all that material, and it's sufficient.
And then, um, obviously, 1K is, is important to us, um, so that's fine. So, all the other deletions, um, and then 2 makes sense because whichever approval is last, um...
Yes. Uh, can you, can you, can you just?
Three, and that's good, three? Can you just touch on three, and that's, I think that's about it?
Certainly. Um, condition, condition three is about the Melwood Legacy Trail and the timing for it. Um, since, since the, since it's following generally the location of Historic Melwood Road, it does run through the middle of the project, um, which, which is fine. We can, we've designed, uh, with that in mind. However, since it's in the middle of the project, uh, we wanted to make sure that the construction of it is, stays in a way that it would not be, um, that it would not interfere with the development of the remainder of the, of, of the project of the homes, and would not invite individuals to kind of traverse construction areas. Uh, so what we've done is we separated the northern and southern portion of it, um, leading to each respective boundary lines, and we've offered, um, uh, permit triggers to make sure that there's peace to it, that, uh, that the master plan trail is provided uh, in a timely but appropriate fashion. So, that's what this condition, um, recommends, uh, and, and reflects those condition triggers that we've discussed with staff for the northern and southern portion of this trail.
Okay. Okay, got it. Um, so again, I think that was applicant's exhibit number two. And, okay, so let's see if the board has any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, and thank you, Ms. Antonetti.
Um, Commissioner Dorner?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Okay, all right, well, that's it. So, and, and none of your folks, um, are, are to speak at this time, right?
Uh, that, that is correct. They're, they're with, uh, they're with us.
Okay, so if no one else has anything to add, like Mr. Burton, uh, or Ms. Finch, um, is the, I don't know, or, or, um, Mr. Bishop, if you have anything to, to respond to, please say so now, or else I'm calling for a motion.
Nothing to add, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff and approve SDP-1601-03 and TCP 2-014-2016-03, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report and is further amended by applicant exhibit number two.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner, uh, to Vice Chair Bailey. Um, Vice Chair Bailey?
But I?
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Dorner?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Um, 5-0. Um, okay, so the next items on our agenda are, are items, um, nine and 10, um, and then followed by 3A. So, nine, item I is, nine is a waiver of the rules for the Beach Tree Preliminary Plan 4-09041, and immediately followed by the request for reconsideration, um, for the same preliminary plan. Um, I am, I, uh, am going to recuse myself from this matter. I want the record to so reflect. Um, this plan, this, um, preliminary plan was approved during the time that I was in the private sector with the same firm, and I worked on this particular preliminary plan from the, from the, from the, um, perspective of the private, um, sector and representing this client. In, in abundance of caution, I consulted with the, uh, State Ethics Commission and Private Counsel prior to returning to the commission and throughout, um, and this is one of the ones that I worked on personally that I will have to recuse myself from. So, I want the record to so reflect, and I'm going to turn this matter, both of those matters, over to the Madam Vice Chair Bailey, and then I will return for item 3A. So, um, Madam Vice Chair, you are on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and we are on for item A. And we will now consider a request that we reconsider our approval of preliminary item subdivision 409041 for Beach Tree CSC Parcel. In order to consider the re, the request, the board must first waive its rules because section 10A of our rules requires requests for reconsideration be made by a party of record within 14 calendar days with final decision. If the board agrees to waive this rule, the board would then consider item 10. I would first like to check to see if we have all required persons available to discuss this item. Uh, let's see if we have from our staff, uh, Mr. Heath, I think, and Ms. Connor. Are you present?
Present.
Present.
Did you hear Ms. Connor? Okay, and returning Antonetti from Shipland Horn?
Yes, present.
Okay, Mr. Mesa from our staff?
Present.
Okay, let's see if all speakers are here. Lenhart, uh, from Lenhart Traffic and Consulting?
Present.
And is that Bill Anthony? Is that someone who needs to be here? I don't hear Mr. Anthony. What about Dan, Adam Jackson?
Present.
Okay. All right, it seems like we have everybody that... It seems like we have everybody that we need to have here. Uh, I would first like to go to staff, Mr. Heath, as he explained to us why the applicant requesting a waiver, and then we will ask if anyone from the applicant's team is interested in speaking. As a reminder, the first item is only a discussion of the applicant's request. We waive our rules. The request for reconsideration will be discussed as the next item, if the board agrees to waive rules. Mr. Heath?
Uh, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and thank you for seeing the file of this subdivision and zoning section. As, as you just said, item number nine on the agenda is a request for wa, for a waiver of the rules of procedure and item, uh, and is a reconsideration request, preliminary plan of subdivision 4-09041, uh, Beach Tree CSC Parcel. Also, I'm, I'm approving, please. I approved the preliminary plan on January 13th, 2011, and the resolution was adopted on February 10th, 2011. By the date of June 10th, 2020, Mr. Antonetti represented the applicant to agree with the rules of procedure first, and have granted a reconsideration of conditions seven, 12, and 13A through B, and finding eight with the resolution on the basis of inadvertence or other good cause. Uh, these conditions and, uh, findings are related to the vehicular trips and transportation improvements required for the subdivision, uh, as in staff's June 30, uh, 2020 memorandum and the applicant's request. If, uh, the request for the waiver of the rules of procedure and the reconsideration request for the preliminary plan are granted, staff will provide further analysis on the merits of the request at a later planning board hearing. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Heath. Uh, are there any questions from members of the board? Ms. Washington?
No questions, Madam Vice Chair.
Donna?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone from the applicant's team seek to address the board on the issue of the waiver request?
Uh, yes, Madam Vice Chair, this is Robert Antonetti at the law firm Shipland Horn. Um, uh, with regards to this, um, you know, we're, we're very supportive of the request, obviously, and we would, uh, greatly welcome the opportunity to address, uh, some of the particulars if and when the, uh, the rules will be waived to allow that to move forward. So, uh, we do urge your support, uh, because the, uh, this discussion is of utmost importance for the success of this retail center. Thank you.
Okay. Board members, are there any questions of Ms. Antonetti? Ms. Washington?
No questions.
The Benona?
Uh, Mr. Antonetti, just for the record, can you just, um, clarify the reasons? I assume that's an emergency or other good cause, but could you just put them on the record, please? And why?
Yes, uh, Mr. Dor, yes. Um, so this revolves around certain transportation issues, um, and, as most preliminary plans, there is a, um, a trip cap for this project. Uh, the trip cap was gen, was generated based on a general retail trip generation rate for 300,000 square feet. When the proposal was made, there was, um, back in 2011, there was the, uh, possibility for a, uh, a fueling and, and convenience store use to be located within this integrated shopping center. Unfortunately, the, the applicant did not include that as a separate trip generation rate which it had at the time. Um, if it had done that, um, the trip cap would be, would be higher, and I can explain that later if the rules are waived. Um, but without any relief, the good cause here is that, um, the C store and, and fueling station is allowed by right. Um, if it were to go forward, it would essentially take up, take up 100% of the AM peak hour trip for the entire center because of this, uh, because of this, uh, issue. Um, so we believe that hopefully represents other good cause and it would advance the public interest to reconsider the condition, uh, to see if we can rectify that in a appropriate way.
Thank you. No, no other questions, thank you.
Mr. Geraldo, questions?
No questions, thank you, Ma, uh, Madam Vice Chair.
If there are no further questions, we will entertain a motion.
So, move, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, uh, that we waive the rules.
Second, Commissioner Geraldo?
I have a motion and a second that we waive the rules. I will call the role, Commissioner... Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
The motion, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Let's move now to item number 10, the request for reconsideration. The board will now consider the applicant's request that we reconsider approval of preliminary plan of subdivision 409041 for the Beach Tree CSC parcel. Section 10E of the board's rules provide that reconsideration may only be granted in furtherance of substantial public interest. The board finds there was an error in the original decision caused by fraud, surprise, state inadvertence, or other good cause. Senator, let's see if we have time for Mr. Heath now. Well, first of all, let's see if we have everybody here that we need to have. Ms. Heath is here, Ms. Connor's here, Ms. Antonetti is here, Mr. Mesa is still here as well. We still have Lenhart, and we did not hear that person respond. What about Bill Anthony? I think we did hear, Ms. Anthony? What, Daniel Jackson?
Present.
Okay. I think that's it, okay. Mr. Heath, let's turn to you to provide the board background on applicant's request and staff's recommendation. Mr. Heath?
Okay, so, so staff believes that the new information provided warrants granting of the reconsideration. The applicant has provided a traffic study dated May 5, 2020, that reanalyzed the original traffic study from August 2010 by inserting trip generation data for a convenience market with gasoline pumps. It is an analysis that could be, that could have been done with the original application. Staff has not yet formed an opinion supported by the full analysis of the request, but we will perform that analysis prior to the reconsideration.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from Mr. Heath from the board members? Any questions?
No questions, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Dornar?
No.
Mr. Geraldo?
No, Madam Vice Chair.
Okay, we don't have any questions, and we'll turn to the, the applicant's team, if you wish to speak to the board, to address the board.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Again, for the record, Robert Antonetti with the law firm Shipley-Horn, pleased to be here on behalf of the applicant, VOD Limited Partnership. I do have with us today Mr. Bill Anthony, who is on the line. He's, he's just on mute. Mr. Daniel Jackson, civil engineer for the project, Morse Ritchie, and Mr. Michael Lenhart with Lenhart Traffic Consultants regarding the simple background material on the overall request. I would like to just incorporate some of my comments from the previous item with regards to this request. We do believe in this situation that other good cause exists to advance a significant public interest for, for looking at condition seven, 12, and 13A through D as outlined in my letter of June 10, 2020. At the crux of this is the ability to move forward with retail development at this site. This site has been planned for some type of retail development for several decades now. It is currently zoned CSC. It was previously zoned LAC, Local Activity Center. In 2011, a preliminary plan was approved, as, as was stated by staff, which approved up to 300,000 square feet of retail uses. At that time, there was exhibits showing conceptual layouts of how the parcels would work together. In that layout, there was a convenience store with fueling station that was reflected on the plans, and that's shown in the backup material of my June 10, 2020 letter, specifically the traffic report prepared by Mr. Lenhart and his team. The board has reconsidered this matter previously, and the most recent reconsideration in 2019 modified a condition allowing direct access from Leland Road, approved by the operating agency, again, to serve the potential for a gas station and convenience market at the corner of Leland Road and US 301. So this, this tenant, this potential tenant, or potential tenant has approached us, and we're very excited about the possibility to move forward, because as you are aware, the retail market in general is, is very lukewarm to new development right now. Again, the project has been zoned or planned for commercial development for decades, and we've had a struggle trying to attract retailers to get this off the ground. While we have interest from one party, we'd really like to see that through, and in the process of reviewing for the, the impact of the C store, a convenience store and, and fueling station user, we looked at the trip cap to see what that might do to the trip cap. It was through that analysis that we realized that there was an error made on behalf of the applicant when we prepared the study. You know, it was inadvertence at worst, but essentially, the trip cap was based on a general retail trip generation rate for the entire 300,000 square feet. The preliminary plan, again, conceptually showed a convenience store and gas station. What it did not do, in the trip generation assumptions, was to utilize the available trip generation for convenience and gas station user, which was available at the time in 2011. If that had been done, the trip cap would have been appropriately placed higher for the AM and PM peak hour, and the applicant then would have a, a cap where they could have the C store and gas station used contemplated in 2011, and then have, have the ability to proceed with the balance of the commercial shopping center approved in 2011. Unfortunately, the cap that we have now has, has a, a certain peak hour trip cap, and as I mentioned in my previous comments in the last item, in the AM alone, the gas station and C store would exceed 100% of the AM trip cap using trip generation rates for, for those uses, which will be required when we go to detailed site plan for that use and a permit. So we're, we're quite a ponder here. What we're asking the board is to recognize that, that situation, and to allow us the ability to go back and analyze the merits with the staff. We've already done that preliminarily, or actually, initially, by providing a traffic analysis, which went back and looked at the, looked at the traffic study from 2011, and essentially incorporated the rates that were available for C store and gas station at that time, and reran the analysis. The result is, we came out with a trip cap, as set forth in my June 10 letter, that has an appropriate AM and PM trip cap to allow for all these uses to coexist. The net-net of that is that the additional trips need to be accounted for in the adjacent US 301 road network. I believe the board is also aware that US 301, between Central Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue, has a CIP project that the county has approved, and it is within the six-year funding window of the county's most recently approved CIP. What that, when a project is, looks to take advantage of that CIP and participate, what they do is they pay a pro-rata share for their percentage of the additional capacity created by the CIP mitigation improvements at all the intersections between Central Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue. What we've done is with the additional trips that we've now asked for to allow us to go forward on the merits with, we've gone back and looked at condition 12, which is the financial contribution that this, this project is supposed to make to the US 301 CIP. Again, it's a pro-rata contribution. What we've done now is we've increased that contribution commensurate with the additional trip cap. So that is, that is the request for, for 12. Conditions 13A through D deal with, as outlined in my letter of June 10, 2020, certain off-site improvements along Leland Road. And there's two intersections, it's Leland Road, Oak Grove Road, which it's really the same road that changes names once you cross a certain span on that roadway. We have two conditions where we need to make improvements, the Leland Road and Worspland Boulevard intersection. That first condition, as currently warranted, states that we need to construct a right-turn lane and a left-turn lane, and install a signal if deemed necessary by Public Works.
Uh huh.
The issue with that is that the left-turn lane and right-turn lane may not be a requirement. It is something that if a signal is warranted, that the operating agency, Public Works, would then require it to be done. By stating it the way it's written right now, it requires us, it kind of puts the cart before the horse. It basically says, do these turn lanes, oh, and if a signal's warranted, do the signal. We think a signal could, if it is warranted, could be constructed with concurrence of the operating agency, Public Works, and we feel that a left and right turns, turn lane may not be necessary at all. But through the suggested revisions in this reconsideration, this would give that discretion back, or keep the discretion with the operating agency, which is where it should have been in the first place. This was an oversight on behalf of the applicant. It was based in part on how it was presented back in 2011, and we would welcome the opportunity to go to the merits on, on this, to validate whether what I'm stating here and in my letter of June 10 is accurate. Secondly, condition 13D deals with a second intersection along Oak Grove Road and Church Road. For those who are familiar with that road, that's really where the St. Barnum's Church is, where that runs into it. There's also a cemetery on, on one side of the road. It's a very tight geometry. There's two things that have gone on since 2011, which would, we believe, warrant a change for other good cause to this condition language, that may not make these improvements required. One, there was a roundabout proposed at one point by another project, I believe Oak Creed, which has now been converted to a, a signal. The board considered that through a reconsideration some time ago, but that was post-2011, when this preliminary plan was first reviewed. We believe that a signal, a signal at this intersection would eliminate the need for these additional approaches. And since the historic setting for St. Barnum's Church is really on both sides of this roadway, space is at a premium. So we'd like the opportunity to go to the merits to determine whether or not that, that is correct, and as we've asserted, and to have flexibility in the language to allow, essentially, for the, for the operating agency to make modifications if improvements such as ones I've mentioned are essentially going forward. I believe that they, that the improvement for that signal is bonded, but that's subject to further verification. But again, this is, since we're in for reconsideration, we believe other good cause in light of those circumstances exists to allow for the potential for, for contagion, condition 13, as I just outlined, and more specifically outlined in my June 10 letter, to be made. Overall, I just, when I appreciate the indulgence on this, I'm sorry to have belabored all the finer points of it, but again, we believe other good cause exists in this situation to correct the conditions or revise the conditions as suggested in my testimony in the June 10 letter. Without it, particularly in regards to the trip cap, the purposes of this, of this preliminary plan are completely frustrated. Essentially, one user, which was, again, contemplated back in 2011, would exceed the morning trip cap for the entire project. There is a way through this. There's a way to modify it appropriately, based on the conditions and trip generation rates available at the time, as I've stated, and we would greatly appreciate your support for this reconsideration request, so then we can go back to staff and work on the particulars to see if, see if we can get the trip cap and the other conditions I mentioned in a, in a state that they otherwise would have been if we had known all this information or had caught it back in 2011. So again, thank you for your time and your consideration. My team, our team is here, and the applicant is here to answer any questions that you may have, but we appreciate your support and consideration of this request.
Thank you, Ms. Antonetti. Let's see if we have any questions. Ms. Washington?
No questions, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Dornar?
No questions, I'm open.
Mr. Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Vice Chair.
If there are no questions, then we will entertain a motion.
Madam Vice Chair, Commissioner Washington here, and I think based on the applicant's testimony, as well as the detailed request as outlined in his June 10 memo, and he referenced several times, and especially with regards to the information surrounding the new traffic study, and then finally, staff's support of the applicant's request, I move that we grant request for reconsideration for preliminary plan 4-09041, specifically for conditions seven, 12, and 13A through D, and finding number eight, on the basis of other good cause and inadvertence, and in furtherance of substantial public interest.
Second, Commissioner Geraldo?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, and second by Commissioner Geraldo. Let's call the roll. Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now, we will wait for a moment, and Madam Chair will be back to the last item, item number 10, I believe it, 3A. Is she available?
If not, camera on. Okay. I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Yes, okay, great.
Okay.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
She went to get some of those speed bars.
Actually, I had, I literally had a bowl of cherries. Okay.
Oh?
So, um, okay. So, um, so now we're going to go to item 3A. So item 3A, we have several pieces of legislation. So Ms. Hightower, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, good afternoon.
So we have, we have a series of bills, I say 39, CB 39, 40, 41, 49, 51, and then CR 56.
Yes, ma'am.
So if everyone is ready, Ms. Hightower, you are on.
Okay, good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the planning board. For the record, Raina Hightower. Council Bill 39 permits a vehicle or camping trailer storage yard by special exception in the CSC zone under certain circumstances. This bill appears to be drafted for specific properties. Staff is unable to identify all properties meeting the criteria of footnote 84. The bill could create numerous unintended consequences. Staff has recommended that language be added to the bill to require additional special exception requirements for this use. Staff recommends that the planning board vote to oppose CB 39-12. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hightower. Let's see if there are any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Commissioner Dornar?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
Move that we accept staff's recommendation and oppose, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. Madam Vice Chair?
But I?
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
But I.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it, five zero. Next is CB 40, 2020.
Yes, which permits eating or drinking establishments excluding a drive-through service in the RE zone under certain circumstances. We believe this bill also is for a specific property and are unable to determine the number of properties that may meet the criteria of the footnote. Also, the age of the building, because the building has to be 20 years old, could cause approval issues, require numerous departures and variances. Staff recommends that development regulations be added to the bill. Staff recommends that the planning board vote to oppose CB 40, 2020. That concludes my presentation on that bill. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's see, are there any questions of Ms. Hightower on CB 40? Madam Vice?
We approve of the staff recommendation, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Madam Vice Chair?
But I?
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote aye to oppose.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, okay, because it was approval of the staff recommendation. Commissioner Dornar?
But I.
Okay. Okay, the ayes have it, five zero. Okay, next we have CB 41?
Yes, this bill increases the maximum lot coverage area from 30% to 40% in the RR zone under certain...
zone under certain circumstances. Planning staff believes that the existing DSP amendment process is a more appropriate process to increase lot coverage area within a clustered subdivision. The process allows the planning board to assess the impact of the greater lot coverage for the overall community, and it provides community input. Staff recommends that the planning board vote to oppose CB 41, 2020. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Hightower? Any board member?
Well, and I will second that, but I wanted to ask staff if she would provide those comments back to where the bill's sponsored or by a committee, that there's a more appropriate vehicle through which we should accomplish this.
Yes, Commissioner, I would do so.
And if that's in addition to the motion, I do agree.
We do include this in the letters, in the transmittals that I signed. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorn?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five zero. CB 49, 2020.
Yes, this bill requires a floodplain study as a prerequisite for residential development of R MXT-zoned land in a FEMA floodplain. This bill requires a floodplain study as a prerequisite for residential development of MXT-zone land located in a floodplain. There is a floodplain ordinance which has detailed regulations governing development in the floodplain. DEPI administers and enforces the floodplain ordinance. The applicant must provide information from DEPI on whether there's a floodplain on the property for review and approval of a NRI before CSP application can be accepted. Therefore, staff believes that the additional study required by this bill is duplicative of existing regulations. Staff recommends the planning board vote to oppose CB 49, 2020. Bill is unnecessary for the above stated reason. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Does the board have any questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, we support staff's recommendation, but again, would ask that we include the rationale in the transmittal letter.
Yeah.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorn?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, five zero. CB 51, 2020.
Yes, this bill establishes universal design, invisibility, design guidelines for development of all dwelling unit types after a certain date. Staff supports this concept of this bill, but we defer to DEPI for the operational specifics of the bill since they provide oversight in construction and development under subtitle four. Staff recommends that the planning board vote to support CB 51, 2020 in concept.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion from Madam, from Commissioner Washington, seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. Is there discussion? Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorn?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five zero. Thank you. And then finally, CR 56, 2020.
Yes, Madam Chair, this resolution requests an Army Corps of Engineers study to establish a plan of action for stormwater management for specific areas of the county. Planning staff supports this resolution in concept as well, but we recommend an amendment to the resolution to require the study area to be county-wide instead of a specific area. Planning staff recommends that the planning board vote to support CR 56, 2020 with that amendment. Thank you.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Washington, seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. Madam Vice Chair? Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote aye, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Dorn?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, five zero. That concludes your legislation for today, Ms. Hightower.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hunt, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Hunt, is there any additional business to come before the planning board today?
Madam Chair, that's all the business before the planning board today. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Everyone, please stay safe, stay woke, look out for one another, take good care of yourselves and your loved ones. Planning board?
And make sure, and make sure you fill out the census.
And make sure you fill out the census. Yes, indeed. Planning board is adjourned. Yes, indeed.
Aye.